Okay, so open tonight's meeting of the main select board is seven oh one P M. And the first order of business for us that we're reading. Script for a hybrid or remotely conducted meeting. Good evening, this meeting of the main select board is being conducted in a hybrid manner. And speakers on the agenda will some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely. And then. The chair may allow for the public to provide comments. The sec- select would would like to hear public comments and if there is further action that is required by the board. The chair or meeting manager will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may they are able to within the confines of the open meeting law respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and a participation is being provided. As a courtesy of the public, the meeting. Will not be suspended. Or terminated technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. To individual attendees unless otherwise required by law. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you, so please take care not to screen share your computer because anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. The meeting materials for this meeting. Are on board docs and. Except for any executive stuff material, which we do not have any of tonight. And they are available on door ducks at any time. We recommend the members in the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless otherwise noted. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude the remarks. We will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any further comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking. Care to identify yourself. For items of public comments. After after members have spoken, the chair may afford public comments as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify. Their name and address only. Who wants to share the list of all public commentators? He will call them each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Public comment for public hearings will only be accepted in person for open meeting law. With that being said, the first order of business for us this evening is the pledge allegiance if everyone could stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, united states, free, democratic, and just as well. Thank you.
Next. On the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments in the room? No. Any public comments online this evening? Okay. Good. I think Melissa, I think you're muted, no?
There you go.
Okay.
I'm not entirely sure if we were supposed to wait until um. The first item on the the item on the agenda. For which we want to comment or do you want comment now?
Which item would that be?
The first one eminent domain.
Well, that's our first item, so we'll we'll open the hearing and then it's appropriate to make any comments during the hearing, which is different than a public comments. Per se. So once we get to once once we open the hearing. And the discussion starts um this. Let us know and we'll open up the floor to um anyone's comments. Okay. Does anybody else have any public comments not related to? Agenda item number two. Okay. So now we will move on to agenda item number two. Which is public hearing. Do we have the public hearing?
It should be maybe checking.
Under executive comments content.
Oh, order of hearing. Yeah.
Okay, nice.
Too long to put in the notes.
I move that we waive the reading of the uh. Order of public hearing.
Can we do it?
I don't know. I would like to, but I doubt it. Uh, we have attorney Ruth Lutolo. I'm not saying your name right here. Ru- Ruo To- Lo.
Yep, Ruto Lo.
Ruto Lo, um. So um he's with town council. Um. What's your advice? Should the should the board chair or otherwise read the entirety of the public hearing script?
Yes.
Okay, well, there you go.
So is that? Okay, I'll read it. Is that? Do I need to read schedule A or just that would just be part of it? Do I need to read it?
You do need to read schedule A, just the owners, just the owner's names, not. Not the property address, just the owners.
Okay.
Just the names.
Okay. Okay, public hearing. I hereby open the public hearing. For the following takings as authorized pursuant to Article six and Article seven. Of the October tenth twenty twenty three special town meeting. Notice having been provided to the owners noted below on October twenty seventh twenty twenty three. A permanent easement for all purposes for which public ways I use in the town of Maynard. Including the installation and maintenance of utilities over in. Under through and upon those parcels of land depicted as. Fletcher Street. Area. Equals seventeen thousand five hundred eighteen square feet. On a plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Maynard, Massachusetts, prepared by V H B Inc. One oh one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one. Watertown, Mass. Zero two four seven one dash nine one five one dated August twenty ninth twenty twenty three. To be recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. In quotations Heights Terrace area ten thousand nine hundred thirty square feet. On. On a plan of land entitled. Plan of Land in Maynard, Massachusetts, prepared by V H B Inc. One oh one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one Watertown, Mass. Zero two four seven one dash nine one five one. Dated August twenty ninth twenty twenty three. To be recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. And. Allen Drive. Thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty five square feet. On a plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Maynard, Massachusetts. Prepared by V H B Inc. One oh one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one Watertown, Mass. Zero two four seven one dash nine one five one. Dated August eighth twenty twenty three to be recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds collectively. B permanent easement over in through under and upon. That portion of the property depicted as proposed roadway easement A on plan entitled Plan of Land in Maynard, Massachusetts. Dated August twenty ninth twenty twenty three. Prepared by V H B Inc. One oh one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one Watertown, Mass. Zero two four seven one dash nine one five one. To be record to be recorded in the Middlesex. South Registry of Deeds. The current order being Brian Mannion for Heights Terrace, Maynard, Mass. Zero one seven five four. C the permanent easement over in through under and upon. That portion of the property depicted as proposed roadway easement B. On a plan entitled Plan of Land in Maynard, Massachusetts. Dated August twenty ninth twenty twenty three. Prepared by V H B Inc. One oh one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one Watertown, Mass. Zero two four seven one dash nine one five one. To be recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. The current owners being Scott Moore and Katie Moore, Seventeen Riverview Avenue, Maynard, Mass. Zero one seven five four. The purpose of the taking is to acquire an easement over the property for various road improvements and repairs. The select board has determined to avoid no damages for this taking to the affected lot owners. That a butt Harris Eggs Terrace, Butcher Street and Allen Drive. Which are listed in schedule A. In the order of taking unnamed as follow. And award no damages to the current owners of record of Seventeen Riverview Avenue, Maynard, and Four Heights Terrace. Maynard pursuant to a certain waiver and release executed by. The record owners of said property.
Now you can go and read schedule A.
Alright, there's that. Then we have someone has to read the motion at some point, but that's okay. So schedule A. Um. Seventeen River you have. Scott and Katie Moore. Four Heights Terrace, Brian Mannion, Twenty River View Ave. Donald Crowe and Melissa Crowe. Twenty three Great Road, Scott Gomes and. Tonya Jean Grooms. Two Fletcher Street, Brandon McDonald and Julie Gary. The hearing is now open.
We have more.
Is it? Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Four Fletcher Street. Ron Broadstone Nichols Trust. Six Fletcher Street, Brendan J Sullivan, Amy H Deshane. Nine Assabit Street. D R J A C Investment Trust. Twenty five Great Road, Mark L. Perdian and Randy L Perdian. Five Fletcher Street. Michael. Candela, Kate E. Alfred Candela. Three Fletcher Street. Michael J Solis, Robin E Solis. One Fletcher Street. Matthew Johann and Catherine Johann. Thirty one Great Road. Stephanie Lizier, Jacqueline King. Two Allen Drive, Kyle Edmonds, Vanessa Edward Edmonds. Four Allen Drive. Ryan LaHare. Six. Allen Drive, Robert Milligan Junior. Nine Allen Drive. Perry. Bacallos and Mary Bacallos. Eight Allen Drive, Craig Boyer and Alexis Boyer. Ten Allen Drive, Steph Janot and Allison Janot. Twelve Allen Drive, Michael Monahan, Lydia Monahan. Fourteen Allen Drive, Jenny.
Lewen Yaga.
Lewen Yaga and Alex Lewen Yaga. Sixteen Allen Drive, Gregory Price and Amy Price. One Allen Drive, David Wall. One A Allen Drive, Amy Vavec, James Boss. Three Allen Drive, Brandon Burke. Five Allen Drive, German Saint Germain Family Revocable Trust. Seven Allen Drive, Stephen Coleman and Marlene Coleman. Okay. Right?
Yeah, we're okay. So attorney Lutolo. To does the board now seek any? Anyone speaking in favor, you mean speaking in in is that and is that open to the board and or the public?
Correct. Yes, that's uh anybody speaking in favor or against uh and open to the public, yes.
Okay. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak? On these items? Online, Melissa?
Yes, um, so I am Melissa Crowe. I'm here with my husband, Don Crowe. Um, we are twenty River View Ave. Um, technically, we are still. The town line runs across our property. Um, as far as um, we're we are not in opposition. Um, we have two questions regarding this. Um, in the notice that we received, it wasn't clear whether or not. Um. On our property, it was a taking or an easement. Looking at the the plan, it looks like. For us, it's a taking and not an easement. Um, the second question is, assuming I am correct. Um, how many square feet would be? Taken? And I'm looking at the town card and according to the town card, um. The land on our property is. Point one three acres. So then the question would be of that. Assuming it is a taking, how many square feet are being taken?
If you don't mind, this chair, I would like to attorney Lutolo, can you help answer?
Yeah, yeah. So the first question, uh, the taking is an easement, so we're we're taking a permanent easement. Um, the second part of the question is. You you. The ownership. That's going to be taken from you is basically uh to the midway of the street line. Uh, so I don't know if you looked on the plans that are on file with the town clerk. Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
So you can see where the where that was laid out high Heights Terrace. So you. It's it's basically to the from from where that is to the midway point of the road.
So.
So the only your your portion, so. You abut the road. And because of something called the Darlik Fee Statute in Massachusetts, you own to the halfway point. So that is what's being taken, not actually, you know, your plot of land as you know it.
So I didn't realize that. So I the way I understood it with there was a difference between a taking or an easement, but they couldn't be both.
No, yeah, I'm not. Well, that's. I'm not sure where you got that information, but a taking can be either in fee. Meaning we're taking the actual land and everything under it and above it. And another taking can be an easement. And now this happens to be a permanent easement. Uh, but the easement is is uh, you know, if the town ever abandoned the road uh for some reason, just continued it, that land would revert back to you.
Okay.
Yep.
So um it how many square feet of that is is on the considered on the permanent easement?
I I I don't know the answer to that. Um. I I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, we'd have to look at the plans or some might have to go out there, but we got to find out what the square footage, whatever the equivalent of. Point one three one or whatever it happens to be, I'm sure we can find it out. I'm Greg Johnson, the town administrator. I'm just talking. So uh. Yeah, no problem. Um, so we can get back to you. I'm sure sure we can find out what those dimensions are.
Okay, so we can expect someone to contact us with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Um, anything else? Anybody else have any comment in regard to these takings and easements? All right.
Did we explain why we're doing?
Would you like, I can give.
It'd probably be good for people who don't. You know, because we kind of know why why it happened or not, but like. It's just a follow up from town meeting and want to make sure that, you know, that we that everyone knows, you know, it's not a random thinking.
Not at all. So for the context of the public, um. That we've been discussing these particular roads for a long time. Like we've been, you know, the conditions in particular Fletcher Street is usually what the focus is on and um. It's across the creek, Ericson's, it's not great. It just happened to be in a weird spot because it's up the it's up the way from Stowe. Uh, but there's accepted roads and unaccepted roads, and there's a number of roads in town that are unaccepted. These in particular are problematic in that their conditions are so poor. Um, unacceptable means like it doesn't fall into the town. We can only do minimal repairs, but we can't really redo the roads according to the town's bylaws. So in order to do that, we have to we have to. Have we have to accept these roads, and it's a very. A very laid out procedure includes town meeting action to accept those roads, which that has occurred, and so this is really like the legal fault of today. And um and notifications that have been provided to anyone that happens to have a piece of this, if you will, like little ownership. And um and as the chair pointed out, it's a lot of people. Um, and so this is like, this is part of the legal sort of action which would eventually lead towards. Putting money towards, you know, uh, doing these improvements. Um, and I think I'm excited. We're finally, we've been talking about this for a long time.
Hmm.
I think that's a district, it might be.
Okay.
Problem.
And does anybody, does anybody on the board have any questions other than to clarify exactly why we're doing this? Okay. Um, would somebody like to read the lengthy?
How moved. That select board acquired by eminent domain for municipal purposes, more specifically various roads and those related improvements and repairs as authorized pursuant to Article six and seven of the October tenth. Twenty twenty three section of the Maynard Special Town Meeting. And further authorize the chair, Chris Silva, to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of said property. A permanent easement for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Maynard, including the installation and maintenance of utilities over in, under, through, and upon. Those parts of the land depicted as Fletcher Street area of equals of seventeen thousand five hundred and eighteen square feet or zero point four zero two acres. On a plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Maynard, Massachusetts. Prepared by V H B Inc. One oh one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one Watertown, Mass. Zero two four seven one dash nine one five one dated August twenty nine twenty twenty three to be recorded in the Middlesex South. Registry of Deeds. Heights Terrace area. Which equals ten thousand nine hundred and thirty square feet or zero point two five one acres. On a plan of land entitled. Plan of Land in Maynard, Massachusetts, prepared by V H B Inc. One oh one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one Watertown, Mass. Zero two four seven one dash nine one five one. Dated August twenty nine twenty twenty three to be recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. And Allen Drive area which equals thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty five square feet. Or zero point seven one zero acres on a plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Maynard, Massachusetts, prepared by V H B Inc. One oh one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one Watertown, Mass. Zero two four seven one dash nine one five one dated August eighth twenty twenty three. Be recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds collectively known as plans and a permanent easement over in through under and upon that portion of the property depicted as proposed roadway easement A on a plan entitled Plan of Land in Mass. In Maynard, Massachusetts. Dated August twenty ninth twenty twenty three prepared by V H B Inc. One oh one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one Watertown, Mass. Zero two four seven one dash nine one five one to be recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. And a permanent easement over in through under and upon that portion of the property depicted as proposed roadway easement B on a plan entitled Plan of Land in Maynard, Massachusetts. Dated August twenty ninth twenty twenty three prepared by the V H B Inc. One oh one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one Watertown, Mass. Zero two four seven one dash nine one five one to be recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. And further and and further that the board determined that no persons will sustain damages in their property by reason of the herein taking. All in accordance with provisions of M G L Chapter seventy nine, section six as amended and pursuant to a certain waiver and release executed by. The record owners of Seventeen River Avenue and Four Heights Terrace. And award no damages in accordance with this determining.
Seconded. Okay, um, so the motion is made a second. Does anybody have any? More comments? Okay, um, this is a roll call vote, so all those in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Dustine?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
And I am a. So that passed.
Got to close the hearing, yeah.
I'm willing. Yeah.
We have it for you.
Alright, so. Name and have a motion to close the hearing.
We'll move to close the hearing at seven twenty four P M.
Thank.
Thank you.
Okay, all favor? The hearing is closed at seven twenty three P M. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are available.
Yes, we are all available. We got a senior office.
Okay. Um. So next up is the consent agenda. Motion.
Uh. I'll move to approve the consent agenda items A and B as presented contingent upon completion of all necessary requirements and adherence to all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines. Authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Seconded, okay. Um, both annual. Um, requests, events, um, first being the Maynard Education Foundation. Tased in Maynard, Tased in Moton uh for May nineteenth twenty twenty four. And the second is renewal of the list of liquor licenses. Um. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the board in regards to consent agenda items A or B?
Amanda Hen is in.
Okay.
Room. Sorry, I'll call you.
Hi, man.
You know if you want to talk.
I'm sorry. I don't. Do we?
That's what I always pull agenda and.
I mean.
All of you have attended it in the past.
Yeah.
I will do that.
We're looking forward to it.
Yeah, absolutely, um. Okay, so I don't think I don't think we need, I mean, we all know what it is. It's a annual event. Don't we drag you out here in a cold night? All right, so um. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the consent agenda. Thank you, we see you uh see you in May. You may nineteen. That was. Yeah. Thank you. All right, um, for Greg?
Yes, this one is, this is a fun one. Um. So the board, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna do a great job somewhere. It is written in the in the board's notes, um, and uh. Greg Wilson said a fantastic job trying to keep the graphics as this is going on, but I'll try to I'll try to regret it. So there's a package store down on Powderville Road. It's a net shop in San Antonio. It's on the other end of like Aspen Road. Um, and that next to it is a shop. So um however many months it was, I can't recall this time anymore. It was it was going to be changing in ownership, right? So the license itself was part of going to be that business transfer as well, but the deal fell through. And however, the board had already approved that transfer. And so now it was kind of in a weird limbo, and we were contacting the A B C C, the Department of Financial Control Commission of the State to find out, okay, so what do we do? The board had already approved the transfer, but the business actually didn't transfer. What do we do? The board, the A B C C with, I don't like watering down a lot, but the. The the A B C C said, if you could just get, you know, like, you know, like basically um documentation certification from both parties, that that is what happened, that would be good enough to satisfy the A B C C. They just, A B C C doesn't know any of these people. They just want to make sure everything's. We weren't able to secure enough. From one party in particular, I we never really got enough of certification to be able to provide that documentation, and so the so it just sat there. Then um through the guys we have in town council, it's a it's it's a dormant license, a pocket license. It's it's like it's a commodity that's not being used. So we went through those procedures as well. Um, and um a lot of back and forth. The owner of the of the property was involved. Um. Now I'm trying to make a long story short. Um. The the. I can't remember between the two, which between the two entities um is has fallen to bankruptcy. And therefore, this commodity is part of that bankruptcy proceedings. In fact, we're joined this evening by attorney Kate Nicholson. Is that is that right?
Yes.
Hello.
You can introduce yourself, uh, because I don't want to get your title for this one. Could you do that?
Yes, my name is Kate Nicholson. I am a bankruptcy attorney and I counsel to the chapter seven trustee. For the bankruptcy estate of Anchor Core LLC. Anchor Core LLC was the owner of, is the owner of the license. Before the failed brand for the other entity called Shree Go. So now the anchor court filed for bankruptcy, the bankruptcy trustee is proposing to sell that license. We had filed. So with bankruptcy court, there is um, you know, a buyer. To proceed. So it is a lease in the same location and um. On the coffin and coffin.
Yeah, we met the coffins once that once.
Yeah, they they came.
Yeah. So we're hoping to emphasize. Use again.
So the person who you represented, the one that originally owned it, that tried to sell it, the the sale failed. And then it reverted back to them, is that right?
No, we haven't. We have to put it back. We have to.
You're you're.
Banker's. So that company filed for a chapter seven bankruptcy. And when an entity or person filed for a chapter seven bankruptcy, the trustee is appointed, who becomes the legal owner of all of that entity's assets. And so the entity anchor four is no longer legally empowered to do anything with the asset. It belongs to the bankruptcy estate. I represent the trustee as a.
Okay, but you you you're very, that's it. I mean, the the, so your your two actions of being recommended this evening for board is, and we've been in touch with the A B C. And by we, I mean, I think credit, it's been great work and talking with attorney Nicholson, talking with A B C B. I'm I'm just, I've been a veteran and um. And so uh, but the two actions of the board, board is being asked to consider. To finally. Um, approve the transfer. Um, back to anchor core. From this limbo state under Shree, because you had already proved it to Shree Go, and the let's that since that deal didn't go through, let's let's actually. Nullify that, back to the original, as you said. And then the second action would be because we happen to be at the timing of things where we're doing license renewals. Um. The the license would prefer to be active so that, you know, it could be sold. And 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 that's so it's like two actions, revert it back to anchor four and then revert it.
Alright, so according to the A B C C. Who holds that license right now?
Shree Go.
According to the town of Maynard, who holds that license right now?
Shree Go.
Okay. I, so Shree Go with holds the license according to both. Entities that have, you know, some stay over the right?
Yeah.
Where is he or someone representing him to tell us? That he's okay with what we're about to do or what others want us to do?
Fair question. I don't remember when the.
Have we ever received anything from, have we, have we received anything from him in writing? We have it? Have we seen it?
Yeah, yes, it's part of the board up in terms. It's a bit of a lengthy packet, but it's.
So which one is it? Is it the Anchor Core license re- reversion or the full packet reversion that it's gonna be in? That he gives us permission to do this? And he, like, he gives up his right to the license?
So that is in.
Yeah, I, I, I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna take this step.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and then, you know, um, especially, uh, you weren't here for this, right? But I don't want to take this step, given the, like, the ridiculousness that we witnessed. On, on Skype, on Zoom several times and in person once, between these two parties. Because there was no, they couldn't even agree they were in the same room. So, you know, now I just want to make sure that if we do this. This, this Sri Govin is not gonna come back at the town with some lawsuit saying you, you beat me out of my license. I could have sold it for X, which is gonna be a terribly inflated number over what we're selling the license for. And that's, it's a problem. So I'm just kinda wanna make sure we have something for him.
It's on the very back of the Anchor Core license reverted document.
Very bad. Oh, you mean like.
Very back. We, yeah, if we, uh, we received it, uh, a little bit after the fact. So it was, I, I put it in as the, the ending page.
So this is, so I'll just read it from, so on the very last page, it says November seventh, um, twenty twenty three. This is from, I'm not gonna say this right, but, uh, Mr. Patel was the manager of Sri Govin. Um, this, this notice of the above reference license transfer did not proceed. The sale of the business has been terminated and will not be proceeding. The license should be returned to Anchor Core LLC.
Okay. Personally, does anybody else have any questions regarding this, um, transfer and renewal?
Is an online wine liquor currently doing business?
No, because they don't have a license.
No, that's why we were gonna take it from them. It's a, because they were, it's dormant. It wasn't the.
The plan is to, if the business will be reopening.
Well, I can't speak to that. I don't know if the attorney, but like, it, like, I, the original, the original plan was for Sri Go. Was running online now, my liquor's given to this new, I mean, people, and they were gonna online like, or whatever they were getting help. If that doesn't happen, I don't know what's gonna happen. The, the commodity will be then built for sale.
Is there a plan to open back up online wine and liquor with this license that we were running back?
So there is, uh, a person named Hardest has made an offer for purchase license for two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Both of those are in for lease, to leave the same space where the license is now on Powder Hill Road. Uh, I don't know what his name, he was confused, one minor or one statement, but the idea is operated towards how it's. Uh, we have filed a motion to seek approval of the sale of the bankruptcy report. That opens schedule for a hearing on the third floor. Um, the way bankruptcy sale works is that other party are getting an opportunity to, um, make a better offer.
Why are we taking the license back, giving it to a business that's not gonna be closed? I'm assuming we'll have to transfer it again once that's all goes through. But we've been taking it back, holding.
Right, so the board does, as a local authority, you, in your authority, you can grant this transfer between lists. But so, or between holders, um, and you, and you'd already done so once. We're just asking that you make the note by that actually that board had already taken, which was. To transfer from Sri Govin to Anchor Core. So we're just asking, that never happened in this case. Yeah, um, and then this is standard practice, like this is a commodity, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's part of the sale.
That's right, like, and so it's. Alright, bankruptcy complicates it, but this is not that atypical for this commodity to be part of the business dealing between sets.
I, 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 whenever one of these situations is counsel, it's not your issue. Um, but whenever one of these situations comes up where the commodity itself that we give to, uh, business. I mean, we just approved a whole list of, uh, alcohol. What's our, what's our fee? Like.
Our fee as a nonprofit, we only charge what we have to break even.
A hundred and fifty dollars, something along those lines per year for an alcohol license, and then it gets sold for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To me, that's outrageous. And I, again, counsel, it's not on you. It's, um, it's just generally. But the town, uh, is the one that sort of, you know, we're giving away this very, very, um. Valuable commodity and, uh, you know, something for us to be aware of when we do. Give those out, that they are worth something and that we should be aware of who we are giving them to. And that we are trusting of them with that valuable commodity. Um, but.
Won't we have to approve the transfer of the license again anyway?
Yeah. But that's it, that's.
But that's, that, that's down, right.
That's if the deal goes through.
Not approve that transfer? I mean, hypothetically, I'm not saying.
They already have purchased it for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, they have to, it's, she just said no, this, they have to go to an open hearing and someone else can bid more if they want.
Uh, and, and again, it's, it's, it's probably a process that you see all the time. Um, it, you know, I know it's come up before, before I was on the board, that there were, that there has been talk about that type of thing, where the license is a commodity and. It's not supposed to be a bargaining tool type of thing, um, you know, so it, it, it feel.
A little slazy? I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm comfortable giving a license back to somebody who's not in business and doesn't intend to get in business.
But that's the only way we can do anything else with, correct?
So I guess, I, on the one hand, if the board decided not to take this action. And the board decided right now Sri Govin, who has been, you know, according to the, the statute of state, is, has the, um. Possession of, of this license, but they're not. Already, was already communication to pay it back, like it was a dormant license. We give them the, however, six month notice, whatever.
Why don't we just take our license back and then let this person who wants to buy it come to us?
I suppose you're right, however, it.
With itself.
With itself, Anchor Core had already been sort of, uh, deemed a responsible party in the first place, right? The board had already issued, uh, uh, had, uh, already sort of like, been prepared to issue this license. I, I had already issued the Anchor Core in the first place. And so one person that, that the board had already found to be a responsible owner of this. And then same with Sri Govin, because the board had approved that transfer to Sri Govin. So. It's, it's, it would be difficult, I would say, to say that, that, that you don't know Anchor Core, you don't know Sri Govin. Because we've already, you have already had the opportunity to liberate the self-sufficient party.
That's kind of the point. We have met both.
Yeah.
And no one in the room is comfortable with either, as far as I know, other than, other than, like, they're going back and forth with the license, right? I mean, I.
Suppose, but that's, but the.
So.
I'm, I'm not a lawyer.
So I, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But we're gonna take a license that hasn't been used. It's been a while. It, you know, it. It hasn't been used. No one sold anything under it for quite some time. We're within our rights to, to take it back. It's a dormant license. And, and then have a license and let them go through the process of applying for the license. Uh, why are we under some sort of, um, you know, why are we under the, under the, um, under these two motions? Why are we involved in what, what they did? Cause, you know, what they did didn't work the first time. Why are we involved in, in enriching? Anchor Core just because him and Sri Govin couldn't come to a, um, agreement?
Presumably it will allow, um, economic development within our town to move it forward. Because otherwise Anchor Core is gonna keep it. Uh, we can, we can recall it.
Anchor Core doesn't have it. Sri Govin has.
That's true. So we.
And we would just have to tell Sri Govin it's a dormant license. We're, we're taking our license back.
That's my understanding of it.
And, and there, there won't be long before someone comes in and fills that spot and takes our license. Whether it's this group or someone else. Okay.
Yeah, that's a cool point. Um, first of all, I want to point out that the sale proceeds will go into creditors of Anchor Core. Right? So Anchor Core will not be enriched by this, but rather the, the vendors and the landlords and the entities that help support that business. Um, when it was struggling, will be made, maybe not whole, but they will be paid actually a considerable. Uh, dividend through the sale license. Also, the, the bankruptcy was filed, I believe, in April, and I have to, I will check that, but I believe it was prior to any. Determination that the license was dormant. So at the time of the case filing, Anchor Core still had the equitable interest in the license. And I don't believe that according to the A B C C, because the sale never replaced. That Sri Govin is the, Sri Govin is on the name of the license, but is not actually the true owner, right? The, the A B C C would not allow Sri Govin to operate that license, having not provided the.
Never finished the process.
That was necessary to do it. But at the time of the case filing, Anchor Core had the ethical interest in that license. And on such, it became property of the bankruptcy estate.
Do you have a lot of history of doing this type of thing for, with alcohol licenses?
Yes.
To be honest?
Yes.
The prospective buyer, Mr. Patel. Would you hear it though?
Right, right, attorney Nicholson? Yeah, it just points to it. Okay, thank you.
So I'm still a little unclear on, I think the point person I were, were trying to make, so. Why not take it back and let Mr. Patel come to us as opposed to giving it back to Anchor Core?
Right, so I, 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 I'm getting, I think I'm getting deep in there, you guys too. So if, if, uh. Right, so let's say, let's say it was meant to stay with Anchor Core in the first place and, and, and the board's actions was sort of like a viewpoint because the business wasn't, didn't actually transfer. So, so it's been Anchor Course, still been dormant. I'm, I'm curious if it's, if, if our council would. Agree that it's not really dormant because it's actually been part of bankruptcy proceedings. Like, they couldn't use it. So it's not really dormant because they couldn't use it as part of bankruptcy proceedings. Does that mean?
No, I, I think more concerning for me would be, we never asked for it back.
We weren't aware that it was under bankruptcy proceedings.
We knew it was out there and never said, hey, dormant license and.
No, I heard a lot of, uh, email or message in court, could be like, hey, you're, you're coming up, you're six months. Oh, now you passed your six months. Like, and, um.
Then shouldn't it have come to the board?
Uh, yes, but in through those correspondence, then we were connected with, uh, attorney Nicholson's office, then having doubt that it is actually bankruptcy.
So, so devil's advocate here or whatever, um, if the transfer had never taken place. From Anchor to Sri.
Yeah.
And, and for one bankrupt.
Right.
Would we be in the same situation we are right now with that asset? Or would we have taken that license? That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. It could very well be that this is where we would be if we hadn't even done the transfer.
I would, I would ask the attorney Nicholson, what would you say?
Yes, I think that's accurate. But when an entity that, that has a legal license filed for bankruptcy. It's very common for the bankruptcy trustee to take this out.
So it doesn't automatically come back to a town, the, the local licensing authority, anything like that?
No, and as a matter of fact, um, I think the licensing authority would be exercising control over the property of the bankruptcy estate. Which is a violation of federal law.
No, we don't want to do that.
We strive not.
Say that again, the last, you say the last, the last statement? That we would be interfering?
Yes, any, any, um, action to exercise control over property that belongs to the bankruptcy estate. During the pendency of the case is violating the, what's called the automatic stay, um, with a federal bankruptcy. So you can go to the court, you can get relief from the automatic stay, you can ask the bankruptcy board for permission to take certain actions, but. Certainly wouldn't, the license wouldn't automatically revert to the town, um, of the bankruptcy.
And once we revert back to Anchor Core, if they hold and don't do anything, it becomes dormant as required and we can take that eventually.
It would become dormant they want, if they don't do anything.
Does it become dormant there?
So when is that? Our next, our next meeting in December will be the, what, the third or fourth or fifth, the sixth? Which is, which is eight days before this alleged sale is gonna take place. Why don't we find out? All these things that we're asking questions about through, through town council, kind of what, where are we with that? Are we truly violating a federal law by, by claiming something that is, you know, I, I, I want to say someone's possession, but it is our license. And what, what's the definition of dormant and how long has the license been dormant for?
At, at the end of the day, though, we wouldn't, we would be transferring value from one party to another. That's it. We wouldn't see any loss of benefit to the town, correct?
Yeah, we wouldn't be seeing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's.
No, wouldn't you? Anyways, but.
Yeah, I, I'm just kinda, you know, curious as to the whole, this whole thing has been a nightmare since starting and. And we kinda get, we've kinda got tossed in the middle. And, and I'm just, I just wanna know, wh- where are we with this and what, whatever, what are our rights? Don't we have any say over this?
We do, but if we, I think if we're to not transfer with a gift that already been signed, we would, they would have to put it back and renegotiate it. Would delay the time of the license, would be an act of use, and that would be bad for the town.
I'm here to wait for you from the nightmare.
I said, I'm ready to move forward.
Yeah, I am too. I mean, I don't think that's.
So we have been in touch with town council the entire way, because we, because we just don't know. So, so by we, I think, that, that like, it's been in touch with town council this, this entire process. And, and I'm correcting for a while.
I, uh, a little bit, uh, not, I haven't necessarily been getting updated from town council about all of this, but.
Have they weighed in on this?
Not to be personally, but.
It's in the notes of the agenda that town council will recommend.
Yeah, we had, I thought.
Endorses the process. Yeah, yeah, I see that.
Yeah, so we, so, but, but even ahead of that, we were, we were, town council was guiding through the dormant license process, one of the, you, you remember, like, they were, I can't remember which. Um. Um, yeah, and, you know, so when we, when we were contacted by attorney Nicholson, I was encouraged to hear that, like, there was progress. Cause again, we, like, I, it is, it's rather burdensome to notify these people who don't see that they're dormant licensed, et cetera, et cetera. You know, and, um, so I was, I'm glad they have some action with the case. It, it, my gut tells me, I know you have an athlete, but my gut tells me, in all likelihood, that this would probably result in similar. Like, a- any sort of like back and forth might result in, in, in state, which is the license is sold with a different order. Um, but, Mr. Cherokee, but we can. Unless, unless attorney Nicholson, like, earns this otherwise, but like, I, I would say if you feel comfortable, we could, we could have this on the agenda. And I can invite town council.
I don't think there's gonna be any change at the end of the day, um.
So I'm comfortable, and I think I heard Jeff say the same thing. Are you comfortable moving forward? I mean, I, I think what probably is shocking. Or what gives people pause, maybe I'm wrong, is that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number, but. That's none of our business in reality. It's not, it's not our property. It's not, um. It's, I think our opportunity to recall that license has passed. And it should have been done back when the, the license had been dormant before it went into these proceedings that now. If we choose to step in front of, may violate federal law, and that's not something that I think we can get involved in. And I believe counsel when she said that, so, um, I think we should move forward.
Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I. I feel like the, the council has, is, is recommending this and, and I agree with David, that I think it makes sense to move forward.
No, I, I agree. I don't, I, I'm, I'm, I pretty much have the same thoughts, which is, you know. I don't love the idea of, and I, I feel like we've used this example before of, of. Not allowing a business to sell a license when it gets transferred. I, I feel like that was a thing, uh, it was probably a thing on the board before I got here, but I remember hearing about it, um. But this is different, as in we really don't have control over it because it was technically property that was then. You, you know, that, that is, that is being transferred or is in bankruptcy, so we, we just don't have control over it.
Okay.
So, kind of, right.
Alright, um, so there's a couple motions to be made and a couple votes to be taken.
I'll move to revert the trans, I will, I will move to revert the transfer license to Sri Govin back to. Anchor Core LLC, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor? Opposed?
I'll move the votes.
Alright, just next.
I will move to approve the liquor license renewal for Anchor Core LLC, D B A, online wine liquor for twenty twenty four and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second. Second.
Any further comments, questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't know, five on the agenda is the appointment of Benjamin Zowski. A lot of names I've mispronounced tonight, I'm glad I got yours right. All right, um, does anybody want to make a motion and we'll we'll speak to Benjamin?
I'll move to approve Benjamin Zowski to the capital planning committee. With the term expiring June thirty twenty twenty six, not authorized use of digital signatures approved.
All right.
Second.
Okay, good evening, Ben. Um, we have your endorsement from John Larkin and we have your application and everything. I guess the question we always just. Why do you want to be in a capital planning? So.
Question necessarily, uh, didn't think I'd ever be asked. Fantastic question. I'm a new resident manager and actually moved here only in June of this year.
Welcome.
And thank you so very much to be here. One of the things I thought about moving to Central Mountain to find our way. I had said that whenever I moved to a town in which we would buy a home and we actually established our residency somewhere. I wanted to become involved and the reason why I wanted to become involved is. I believe that change takes a long time to actually occur, something that happens overnight. I want to get involved early and often somehow. When I reached out to Greg and looking at opportunities to get involved at a county level, I just listed out, what am I good? I was a professor of economics, you can refer to it at times, I observed in quantitative risk analysis for my entirety of my career, both as an actuary and banking. You're ready? Yeah, I'm good with numbers. I'm good with numbers and I really want to help out in town all along for me. So between those few things, Greg said, hey, the license is available, but there's a spot around the capital planning committee, it is something that is long term. Terms are every three years approximately, this one of course goes until twenty twenty six, so two and a half or three. By this Sunday, I seem to map which areas fields. I met with John, I dream of God with him, spoke about that, and the last couple of channels, giving myself. And I think there is opportunity for me to pay a loan, me, you, myself. So that is really why I would like to do other things.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions?
Uh, comment, um, not only recently, you you're like brand newly married, congratulations, I mean, October twenty eighth.
Yeah.
Three weeks ago. You know, you get right into it here with.
Big year.
What are your thoughts on the capital planning uh committee meetings?
Uh, it's been very insightful, you know, there's a lot of it, when you come to a new town, they're living in Silverville, it's been there five, nine years. And I believe the land of what is occurring then, uh, coming to the, I think many are trying to think about different towns, trying to care those issues, uh, I was. Probably read on the Greenbelt School pages, been trying to get involved more and understanding about would be. Uh, perspective planning, which is the cardinal corridor, do you understand that incorrectly? Uh, but again, just trying to understand more about it. I think right now it's more of a principle, or if they give any case for a new member of any city. And to understand what is occurring, what are the options, kind of beautiful high ex and like what are the available funds and then from there, again, trying to find ways of. Doing what I do best, members of now, helping hard. Been very informative and hoping to come more active, involved in. Be involved with.
Okay.
Do you think you're a top teacher?
Uh, I think some of my students would say so, but I think some of my others would say I'm a soft, so.
If Assembly Row doesn't exist and you have to eat dinner in Somerville, where are you going?
Ooh, you know, Dave's Fresh Pasta in Davis Square, you know, to take your pasta on the.
Yeah. Vinny's on Broadway? Vinny's on Broadway?
Vinny's great place as well, I want.
Make sure, what's the best, what's the best bakery on Broadway? Mendels?
Mendel, yeah, I don't think down points top, right?
Yeah. That's why I'm so fat. All right. Still no, thank you for your interest. Thank you for coming so close to uh. Joining something like that so soon after being married. Right, but no, we 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 appreciate it, we appreciate the um. All the, all the volunteers, advantage for all of our committees, so. Um, welcome to Maynard and unless anybody has any other questions, we can um put it to a vote and see who's in favor of. The appointment. All in favor? Thank you for your interest, Ben, and good luck.
Thank you, Ben.
I haven't been getting it uh by the town clerk in the next, before the next meeting that you attend, before you can vote actually, so yeah.
Yeah.
They can have, they will have a few more times over the course of next.
You might see.
But I'll be cheering you all for it. Thank you very much.
All right, so we're onto downtown parking. Annual. Anybody make like a motion to downtown parking?
Temporary free parking at the minute for two hours from November twenty fifth through December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Second. I got it.
Any questions about this annual? All those in favor? Thank you.
Are we going to promote that first? It's about one site somewhere or something, or like a little or something.
That's a new guy task.
New guy task.
Greg, can you give us an update on the CDEF grant for the library?
Should I like the libraries?
Okay.
That's why they're here.
All right. Sure, you just have to tell everybody who you are and then.
I'm acquired, library director here at Maynard.
Okay.
Thank you, Laura.
Welcome back.
So what we're trying to do is improve three areas around the library grounds. Uh, to make them more attractive so that people want to be walking around the property so they can see the building, so they want to be walking around downtown. Um, so they can enjoy the story walk better, so they can just sit and read, do whatever they want there. And we want to do it in a way that's sustainable, since we don't, you know, we don't really have a grounds crew. So it needs to be something that can be maintained easily over the years and we wanted to do something that was. Pollinator and other widely friendly, um, so it, these are a few areas, so there are two corner. Gardens uh on the parking lot side, so um. Both you can enter each corner, the Glendale entrance and then the other corner, and then the circular garden on the Nathan Street side. And so the two on the parking lot side, you know, volunteers have worked on that a lot and done, you know, a lot of good work, you know, weeding and trying to. Plant things and some things have taken some, not, they they need a lot of of work and some resources beyond what the volunteers have. And um on the other side, the circular garden, it, um, the pine tree that was originally planted in there just really has gotten overgrown and it blocks the view of. Of the building and the story walk and can't really grow anything else in that bed, so. Um, so we heard about the cultural district enhancement fund and this seemed like a really great fit. The library is. One of the anchors of the cultural district, one of the founders and uh so we love to have this contribute to. The attractiveness and vitality of the district. Um, so if you have any specific questions about the application, I'm happy to address those. It's at fifteen thousand dollars, it's a total, there's a a an itemized budget in there. I noticed you you mentioned that you uh that you are aware of, you know, trying to do low maintenance and and whatever. So is there any additional, is there going to be any additional burden on the DPW to maintain this area at all? Yeah, no, the DPW uh will not be asked to do anything with this. They don't do anything with the ground now except for snow and nature global. Okay. So we have a landscaper uh that paid for out of the library budget of the Roosevelt Building budget. Um, this is care of our, you know, open a wing, blowing all that kind of thing and um. So we would be having a a contractor, you know, if we get this at this grant. Have a contractor help us do the installation, help us set up um the irrigation that we would need to do for that first. He's in that first year, um, and then it's going to be uh. Hopefully mostly self maintaining, but there will be, there will be certain things we'll want to do to maintain every year, a little bit of. Trimming that we can have our landscaper do to keep things looking nice. Um, they, the landscaper will do weeding, um, the community gardeners, so I should acknowledge, I see. It's online, I did it, uh, Dan Rosenberg has been my co planner and all this, it was really her idea initially to improve these areas, she's done a lot of work on them herself. And um she's involved with community gardeners and there's some interest there in helping out with all of this, so great.
I'm trying to envision as I look at the plan here, um. As you're driving down from the Cumberland Farm towards the library on uh. It's essentially on the backside, on Glendale Street.
That, that's right, it's it's most visible from the parking lot.
Okay.
So right now that.
All right, now I see.
And you see, yeah, there, it's uh from Glendale Street, people have made their own paths through this garden area.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're, that, we're fine with that. We would like it to be nicer for them and to look nicer. They're just kind of worn some paths and we're we're glad that people are.
Wow, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we just want to make that a little nicer.
I was envisioning it from, looking at the library from.
And one of the gardens is on that, the circular.
Yeah, right, that's right. All right, now it makes total sense.
Okay.
This could be much a positive and a good thing to me that you know, James, I better get that. Great work, okay, support.
All right, um, does anybody want to make a motion in regards to this?
I will. Move to approve the application for the use of fifteen thousand dollars from the cultural district enhancement fund, CDEF, by the Maynard Library for landscaping improvements at the library as presented and authorized use of digital signatures approved.
Second.
Okay, does anybody have any comments or other questions regarding this?
Uh, just one comment. First of all, I'm really glad to see that you got the community gardeners involved and. Others in town as well, and just making sure that. This is something that indeed can be preserved and maintained in the long term, not just set up, so it's exciting to see, so thank you.
Okay, um. All right, any other comments? All right, in that case, we'll take a vote, all those in favor? Thank you, thank you for your. Another great presentation from the library.
Yes, thank you very much, we really appreciate it. Thanks for giving us an opportunity to approve a a project with the CDEF on.
Yeah.
Oh, good, yeah.
No.
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 Second, third.
Second, third.
The third.
For the benches one? Was it the benches and then?
It was the park, it was the parking island.
Yep.
The um, oh, the second one, oh, the wayfinding sign.
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
All right, on to uh the recreation commission. Um, we had to receive an update from the recreation commission's field use subcommittee regarding town field use and policy in authority.
So I think, Mr. Chair, I think we're we're being joined by Denise Foal.
Okay.
No, and oh yeah, so why I'm getting referred is true, which I knew, uh, so Julia Flannery is talking to me, she's not well. So I think it's, it was going to be the two, it's just.
Okay.
And I I can say real quick, um, I I've been uh part of. A group of people now, uh, you know, that has been headed up by the recreation commission. To really kind of take on the um. The field use task force and if they really. They really owned this role and they're getting a lot of really good information together. Uh, to try to move the town forward um in a cohesive way. Uh, so I, we had a meeting last night and I just wanted to. Preface that before we started.
Okay, Denise, could you just tell us who you are and um, and that right in with the presentation?
Sure, um, and thanks for having me tonight. My name is Denise Walsh, I am the chair of the recreation commission. Um, and as Justine said, the recreation commission, so just going back a little bit, there was a field usage task force um a couple of years ago. Um, that met uh several times over a couple of years, Jim Hines, our former chair, really sort of headed that uh task force. Um, he resigned and that group just sort of disbanded. I think they met briefly the beginning of um, the end of twenty twenty two, maybe the beginning of twenty twenty three. Um, and then not much was done after that. So the commission got a couple of new members, um, getting some traction, really started looking at, okay, you know. We're always looking at, and I think I've I've said this before at select board meetings, we're um consistently looking at who we are. Uh, what's our function here in Maynard? Um, the recreation commission uh currently does not have the staff or the means to really run programs. That has always been in our um, in our plan, we would love to run programs, uh, currently just not set up to do that. So as we looked at um, what, you know, what can we do to to helping Maynard and to to move things forward in Maynard? So we took a look at this, what was a task force and thought. That the recreation commission really is uniquely positioned to facilitate communication amongst the. Owners and the entities that have responsibility for all the the fields in town. Um, we have been talking with Julie Flannery about the parcels that. The um conservation commission owns. Um, we have been talking a little bit with the schools, um, and now the town, and so we thought this would be a really good time to resurrect that um. Task force, which we are now calling as a subcommittee, the field usage subcommittee, to start really talking about what's needed. So we've had, oh, I think, three meetings now so far, um, we have invited representatives from school. Um, the school department, the school committee. Um, we have Justine, who has been coming to our meetings. Uh, the conservation commission and then representatives from all of the youth sports, so we have invited representatives from. Maynard Stowe, baseball, softball, um, uh, Maynard Youth Football, which I think is now partnered with Nishoba, uh, Men and Youth Soccer. Um, and so. The core that's been meeting has been the school, the rec commission, both the school committee and the school department. Um, Julia Flannery's been um very instrumental in helping us as well. Um, and so. We first talked about our goals. What do we want to do with the subcommittee? We want it to be um collaborative. We want it to be positive, um, we want to put process in place that um. To make sure that everyone's being heard, um, and we want fields in town that everyone can be proud of in that um. We're being responsible for the use of these fields. Um, in addition, um. The rec commission and the conservation commission has been, had preliminary talks about. The lands that the conservation commission is responsible for, um, and if it makes sense for the conservation commission to continue to manage those lands. Um, they really don't do anything with those lands, people go to them for permission to use them, but it's not. You know, it it's technically under them, but not really conservation, um, feels like um. Uh, Rockland. Um, you know, it's used by Men and Youth Soccer, but it's technically, they have to go to the conservation commission, so. She identified some parcels that it might make sense to transfer the management of those fields to the rec commission, not the ownership. Um, because they're they're deemed, you know, conservation land. So we've had those initial discussions. Our initial meetings have been very, very good, in my opinion, they've been very positive, we've talked about goals, um. We've identified some areas that we want to focus on um to start with. One, there is no one system under which all of the fields are are scheduled. So we really don't know who's using fields, when, how often. That leads to the potential for overuse, um, it could lead to the potential of underuse, maybe there's some fields that we could use more. Um, we all know there were issues with um uh fees. Being charged, being not charged, that is one area that we do want to tackle at some point. But first of all, um, our main focus is is really getting a good understanding of who's using the fields when and how often. And so we've had discussions with um the school department. Uh, Mike Maria, our athletic director, who I know is here, um, and Colleen Andre, who do uh most of the scheduling through ML schedules. Um, and then uh Natasha's been very instrumental, um. Keeping that communication between all of the parties and the uh school committee. So we've had um some good discussions and some agreement that having one system to. Schedule or at least get all of these fields on one um, one calendar and then to be able to schedule use. Um, would be advantageous to everyone. Um, to the fields so that we know who's using them and potentially um be able to rest fields if needed. Um, make sure that fields aren't being um, one, overused or misused. So part of this process will be coming up with process and procedure for for how to use fields and how to. Be held accountable for for use of fields. Um, working with Justin DiMarco, he came to our meeting last night and so resurrecting some of the process and procedures that he um. Had put together, so not reinventing the wheel. And really getting everybody on the same page of what does it look like to uh to to rent a field, to use a field and be responsible for that. We have different procedure for um how to requisition the use of a field, it goes to three or four different people. And so how do we harmonize all of that, so that. Uh, one, again, we know who's using these fields and who's responsible for using the fields, um, and then two, making sure that we don't have. You know, two entities showing up to use the same field, so just everyone kind of being on the same page. So that's sort of number one, is just getting a clear sense, and and I think we've made some progress with that. So uh Mike and Colleen are working on getting all of, at least the fields in the system in M L schedules and syncing that with. Um, Arbiter, which is the outside software that schedules all of the games, getting all the, you know, the practices on there. Um, and so we recognize it's going to take some time to to get everything in there and to start um to tracking who's using these fields and get some data. So really accumulating data if he's using these fields is is this is the first step. And then two, can we put together that process and procedure for using the fields, can we put together an approval process? A a sort of chain of command for, you know, for each of these properties, depending on who's responsible for them, whether it's the select board in the town. The conservation commission or the schools, what's a chain of command for approving usage? And then we talked about things like, you know, well, what if somebody books, you know, several weeks of using a field and then doesn't use it? Who's going to monitor that, who's going to wake up on a Saturday morning and it's pouring and and has to, you know, alert everybody that we're shutting the the fields down? I know the schools do that for their sports, but who's doing that for outside um entities and making sure that our fields aren't being used? Or misused when there's bad weather? And then the second to last piece is the fee structure, so really making sure that we we think about this. In a way that's fair and equitable to all um our initial thoughts, our first identifying and defining. What's an in-town organization versus an out-of-town organization? Um, we briefly talked about a tiered approach to 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 pricing, um, to charging fees, we haven't gone beyond that. Um, we know we're a little bit away from really being able to talk about that, um, still trying to identify who those people are that are using the fields. Again, defining what's in town versus out of town and can we come up with a fee structure that's fair and equitable for everybody? And then what can we use those fees for? Um, you know, ideally it'd be great to maybe use those fees for some sort of administrator that can administer all of this. To take that burden off of any one entity in town, whether it be the schools or the town or or whatever. Um, realistically, using those uh funds for maintenance, you know, we'd have to bring in a lot of money for maintenance in order to do that. And uh we'd defer to, you know, we would work with Justin on on some some ideas for that, but, you know. The first step is identifying who's using our fields, um, and then coming up with a process and procedure that we can all agree on. Um, as to what me, what is good usage of fields, um, and then coming up with, you know, some sort of fair and equitable fee structure. That's where we're at.
Anybody have any questions or?
I have one, do we have any sense of what it costs the town to to maintain and use the uh these fields? Uh, I mean, I would only assume as from from what you were saying, in in your very clear uh presentation here. That, you know, the fees won't come close to covering the cost of of uh using maintaining field, I'm just curious to know what what level we're at.
So there, go ahead, yeah, there are, so, yeah, my understanding is that there there are ba- there's basic maintenance that the town and the schools do. Very basic from um, from mowing to um, I I think, you know, to to some watering and and and. There, a little bit of irrigation, I think, depending on the field, um, there's, this all came about because the Fowler field. Um, that a, you know, a lot of money was spent on renovating, um, currently there is an a a comprehensive maintenance. Uh, plan for that, there's basic maintenance and then there's comprehensive maintenance and so, um, basic maintenance needs, I believe, are being met, I think. Been to who you asked, actually, uh, that the basic um, maintenance uh plans are being met for that, but then there are, um, there are additional. Um, maintenance steps that should be taken to prolong um the health of a field, um, and. The money for that type of maintenance is not in the current budget, Greg, is that, is that fairly accurate?
Yeah, absolutely.
So to answer your question, Mike, I don't have, we don't have those numbers, I think that will be part of the process. Is to try and get some of those and that would be going outside to, you know, I think to an outside company to be able to do that. It's beyond the means of of being done within um, within the town, um, and the staff in the town, so. That would be if we could do it outsourced to um, you know, to an outside contractor.
Right, I guess I'm I'm just concerned to make sure that in the event of, you know, really adverse weather conditions, that there are strong protocols in place. For how those uh uh fields should be used, uh, and and avoiding unnecessary damage that can be more long lasting.
Right, yeah, I think Mike Maria, you know, he's on, he can, he can talk to, of course, the school and um, you know, the the teams. And how that's being done, um, with multiple teams using very limited fields. Uh, I'm not sure about the outside, I know that many youth soccer is is um very conscientious about the use of fields within their organization. Um, they're probably one of the best organizations in town that really does care about, you know, making sure that they're not damaging any fields and. Um, they will cancel more often than not, um, if it has to do with, um, if it's going to damage the fields, they'll they'll cancel a program or cancel. A day of games, um, if they think it's going to damage the fields, but that's one, you know, that's one in-town conscientious organization. Um, we have, you know, uh, several outside organizations that like to come to Maynard to use our fields. Um, I don't know how many we're charging, that may or may not be a reason why they like to come to Maynard, because, you know, we we have open fields. And I'm not sure if they're being charged, who knows, um, that's a total guess on my part, but there are, you know. Part of, part of the challenge that we've had, um, and the the internal angst that that we've heard from from residents is that. We've on occasion had outside organizations use fields, um, um. Before their town field, before their their town teams were able to use them, we've had, you know, the fee structure challenges, so. You know, we're just trying to facilitate conversations to make sure that everybody within Maynard is on the same page. And then, of course, offer our fields to outside organizations if we can, um, but, you know, I think we all agree, we would like compensation for that.
Thank you.
One of the things that we talked about last night, uh, Colleen was on the meeting as well, uh, Colleen and Ravi, and she has been able to, I think Denise, you alluded to it. You you said earlier, is she's been able to add the town use fields into the M L scheduler. And she has created accounts for Greg, I think Greg, D P W and Julia, I think. Um, and so they're kind of ready to explore a little bit, they're not active, they're not live, but they are ready to go. And the thought was um that we can start entering what we have, what we know. Um, and that way, throughout this year, we start to learn who's using what when. You know, because, you know, we have the, we have the the out-of-towns that reserve for an entire, you know, season or whatever, and I think it's easy. I know Greg has probably a very large spreadsheet of those things, but, um, but that way we can see which fields are getting the most used and. Now, but they are ready to to, how do you do that, if you're up?
Great.
And, you know, we would love to have each of the, you know, each of the entities that are responsible for, responsible for parcels also. Um, put together what each of your processing procedures are, so for the select board, for the. And the parcels that are, you know, owned by the select board or at least the approval for use is under the um. The responsibility of the select board, um, what does that look like for you all? Um, how does a call come in, who does it go to, what's your approval process, I know that, um, you know, Justin mentioned permitting. Um, we haven't even gotten to that part yet, um, there's there's there are insurance issues, um, so. You know, we would love and we're we're going to ask Julie, uh, Julia for hers, Julie for hers, um, I know I talked to, you know, Natasha and Mike about putting together. Um, the schools process for uh receiving requests and approving them. Um, so, you know, we would love to have that same information from the select board, um, as well as from the conservation commission and then pull it all together. See if we can work that into the processes and procedures that um Justin's already started putting together. So that's sort of that piece of it that we could start working on while we're collecting data.
Okay, or, thank you, any questions for? The recreation commission, Denise?
Yeah.
Alright, I think that's it, thank you very much.
Great.
Oh, wait, question?
If we looked at other town fee structures to get an idea of what they're, how they're approaching the same challenge?
Um, I was not part of that in the beginning when they were talking about free sha- uh fee structure, um. Definitely something we can look at, um, and I'll have Natasha pipe in here too as well, some of the challenges with the towns that surround us are. Um, their their budgets, um, they also, just about every town that surrounds us, I believe, has a rec department. Um, versus a rec commission, so that's, you know, some some differences, they have budgets and staff and things like that, um, so. Natasha, I don't know if you have any other info on that? Here.
Yeah, just to to add that, um, yeah, that was originally looked at a few years ago, there were samplings done for like Littleton, more the. Independent um, towns and there were different, they kind of took different approaches, what Denise talked about. Was one where they had different fee structures for residents and it, um, the organization, if it was an um, an exempt organization. Or, you know, a nonprofit or for profit, so there's a lot of different criteria that kind of went into that and depending on how many residents were uh part of that organization. For instance, for ma- um, youth soccer, they're entirely Maynard residents, but not all of the Maynard organizations. Are entirely man and resident, so I think that's the discussion point that Denise is talking about of how, how do you get to that slice? Um, that was looked at, and I think that's where folks kind of left off because it it did, it did um, did ruffle some feathers at one point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, alright, on to number nine, the uh special education stabilization fund transfer request.
So Mr. Chair, the the board had, they gave this last meeting, and the board had some inquiries. Uh, which the director of her school, chair of the school committee had been decided to take and follow up with, and then we had also brought. Um, Wayne White, who's the business um, manager for the school district. Um, Brian Hawes, superintendent also chimed in, and and so, and so they're here this evening and they provided a lot of information which is included. Um, my suspicion is they're here expecting if there's any other questions you could probably pose it now, unfortunately, the original question still remains. Uh, to seek the board approval, this will be very imminent, to transfer money from the special education stabilization, special education stabilization fund. Um, towards the operations of the school district primarily to address the costs associated with special education, transportation tuition.
Okay. Um, there's a motion, would anyone like to make the motion? And we'll open up to discussion. Nobody want to make the motion? Alright, yeah. Alright, so what's the discussion, um, questions? For either Natasha, Brian or Wayne, we're all free, who has a question?
I um, I'll just comment, thank you very much for the detailed information, appreciate it. Um, I do have a question and I don't want to, I know that there's sensitive information here, because you know, I don't want to hear anything about individual students or whatever. But I'm just curious, um, for transportation, I think one of the, uh, one of the particular. And this is general, I don't want it to be specific to anything, um, for special ed transportation. From one town that is not Maynard to another town that is not Maynard, how does Maynard get involved in that type of a situation?
So are you, uh, if you have, like originating a Maynard student or not a Maynard student, I guess that's what I'm.
We don't know.
I don't know, because, and I don't want to know.
So I can, I'll speak to very high level, so if, um.
Bill, the bill that we see, one of the line items shows transportation from one town that's not Maynard to another town that's not Maynard. And I'm just interested in how frequently that happens, that we're responsible for, and it's really just to get an understanding, a greater understanding of.
Yeah.
The the impacts of these special ed uh issues that we may not have have appreciation for. But a transportation from what's for a student apparently that does not live in Maynard to a, to a location that does not. End up in Maynard, I don't know how Maynard gets involved and and how frequent is it and, you know.
So there's a couple of different ways that I I know of and I um, I know that just dealing with special, sometimes it's bus routes. Um, there ha- you could have a special education school that is in Wall Fam. And they could have the bus route van pool that we contract with, for instance. May have three or four kids on that route, that also the person who starts the route might start off in a different town. Then they're picking up someone maybe from Hudson, then they're picking up someone maybe from then Maynard, and so it's the route that they take. Um, so it might originate in where the the van driver, wherever they pick up their van and it might go to. Um, Wall Fam, which is the destination of maybe the school, but through that coursework they might pick up. So that's one scenario that could possibly happen, another scenario might be that I know of, and this is not comprehensive, but these are the things that might come to mind. Is where you have um students who were residents of Maynard who maybe moved out of district. There are certain, we still have to uh fund certain expenses in that transition year. And so they might be in an out-of-district placement already, but now they're living in Acton. And we still, part of the D C laws and finance laws is to, to help the other town. It kind of has a transition rollover when, when that full burden falls onto the new town, so those are the two things that immediately come to mind in that kind of scenario. I don't know if that helps at all.
Second, under that second scenario, and again, I'm not talking specifics, I'm just talking generalities, under the second scenario, if some student moves out of. May or to another community, and that first year, the transition year, let's call it, uh, Maynard. The former school district is still responsible for that transportation cost, then does it fall off completely the following year?
I don't want to, I don't want to speak to absolute, that's usually something along those lines, how it works, there is like a a sunset of when we're responsible for. The funding, uh, sometimes there might be agreements with, you know, different districts where you're doing like a fifty fifty share, you know, depending on. There's a lot of different possibilities where Maynard might still be on the.
Who would make those agreements typically?
That's part of the I E P meeting and the decisions that are part of the team that's supporting that student and their family. So um, it could be that sometimes you could also be reimbursing the family if they decide that the transportate, they were, they're going to do the driving. They're entitled by by the state to be reimbursed for the expenses of transfer, transporting if they choose not to, you know, to do a van. So there's a duff- a couple of different mechanisms where that funding might come into play.
And then Natasha, one last question pertaining to the first scenario that you gave, where say the the bus begins its trip. In Cambridge and then it goes all around the area and picks up a kid in Maynard and then delivers them or a student in Maynard and delivers them to. Their final destination, say in Concord, um, we would only be, and I'm asking this, is this true? We would only be responsible for our portion of that trip?
I I don't want to say with certain, because I don't look at those invoices at a school committee level, but I I would have to defer to Wayne or. Or probably our director of student services to maybe clarify, because that's a little bit more detailed, um. I would say in theory, it sounds like it should work that way, but I know when it comes to transportation, nothing is always exactly, because we're kind of at the mercy of whatever. Because we're kind of at the mercy of whatever the drivers and whatever the companies that are available. Um, you know, can, can do that. So, but I think that sounds about right and I don't know, Brian, if you have any. If you wanna expand or have any thoughts.
No, you did a great job. That sounds accurate. We would be responsible for our part. There's lots of different scenarios where. Students might have parents living in different towns, but they predominantly are in Maynard. So we may have to, and if they're. If their I E P indicates transportation, we're responsible whether they're at one parent or the other parent, even if the other parent may be out of town. And transportation has been a bigger challenge this year than in the past significantly, especially for special education. Because the companies that we use don't have enough drivers. And they would love to have more drivers. So if you know anyone who wants to be a van driver, refer them to Vanpool. Um. That, that's a big challenge and you've seen, I think I submitted to you or shared with you a couple of invoices, which are atypical for. Uh, districts like Maynard, Concord, I mean, all we're in, you know, for the towns that send to. Our collaboratives, say Case, uh, that's Acton, Boxborough, Concord, Carlisle, Maynard, et cetera. Um, we're all getting hit with. Transportation bills like this, both many of the districts last year continuing this year. We didn't have those issues last year, but we were definitely feeling the impact of that this year.
So do you not pay for transportation if it's included with the Vanpool?
So if Vanpool can. Transport the student, that's a bill, but it's at a much lower rate than once they're full. Once they've maximized their routes, that's all they can do. So if kids move in or if we have other. Students who need transportation, we're still responsible for that. So then we just have to go find it, which we've done this year. It just is significantly more expensive than if we can. If Vanpool can do that and they are working and I don't wanna. I, I do wanna acknowledge that Vanpool has worked tirelessly to increase their driver capacity for all of the participating districts.
So, uh, and, and I appreciate that. I'm not trying to, to say that they're not either. Um, but I do wanna, I'm just trying to figure out. What the delta is, because it was gonna cost something for these students to be transported anyways. And then we, we didn't get the invoices for, you know, the twenty fourth, you know, twenty four thousand or twenty nine thousand. But what would it have cost them? You know, so because, because it's not that it costs this much. Over because you would have had to pay to have them transported to begin with, correct?
It would have been a bill, but it would have been substantial. And I don't have the original billing in front of me. I would defer to, um, the business office. Um. But it's, that's been one of the things that's been financially a challenge both last year and this year for districts that once the. Sort of the standard transportation fills up is finding alternate transportation is incredibly more expensive.
I guess the, the biggest question I have, and I, I do have a memo. Thank you for putting all of the information into it. Um. I, I, I'm having a hard time understanding and it's because I'm not in the industry. How? You know you need the entire amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand in the circuit breaker fund. When you have. Nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. And. You anticipate that if, if you're going to have to continue this for ten months, which you might, but you might not. It could be two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which might bring it down to six hundred and forty thousand dollars, but that's still over half a million dollars in that account. Um, so I, I'm really struggling to figure out why. It's crucial right now to have access to that money.
I'll, I'll just jump in first and then Brian, um, so I, I think part of what. We're responsible when it comes to unknown liabilities. The state just says if you have an unfunded liability. That you need to make sure that we have appropriations for it. And so this came about as one of those. Unexpected unfunded budgetary liabilities that came out and we had, we know now. There is no funding source for all of this transportation. And then we also know that based on Desi's. Guidance, they recommend not depleting. The circuit breaker accounts because of the volatile state regarding just special education expenses in general. So I think coupled with those two things, it's from a financial, you know, stewardship. I don't think the. The approach would be if we know that we're not gonna, we don't have funding for this now. Whether we get it now or later, it, it needs to be, it needs to be available. I think the responsibility, responsible thing would be to seek the funds to ensure that we secure the funds now. Because we know it's an expense that's not funded.
Well, I think that, I mean, and that's, that's kind of my point is, is the money is not going anywhere. You know, it's, it's in a special ed stabilization account. It can't go anywhere else. So. What makes it more secure in the circuit breaker fund than where it is right now?
Because we can expend it, which we know we have invoices that are coming in. Which have already started to come in for this company.
But you currently, if you expend everything, you anticipate you'll be down to the six hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is again, still over a half a million dollars in that account. Plus you'll have the two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in the special ed stabilization account.
I'm not sure I understand your question. So we have, we can expense from the stabilization account.
Correct. So, and, and I understand that. But what I'm, what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to get at, so. If for some reason, and I guess the other question I do have is. Are you expecting any additional circuit breaker payments? Cause I know that that happens quarterly. So will you be getting additional payments in?
So those, those come in quarterly, right? I think I sent over that information about the, the. The reimbursement schedule and the calculations for Maynard and for all, yeah. So those come in quarterly.
Okay, alright. So, so I get what I, what I'm asking is. Why do you need the two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars now that is in a safe? Account that can't be spent on anything else other than special ed? When you, when you're giving us your anticipated. Balance, which is still over a half a million dollars, even using, even noting that you've got unexpected, unexpected costs.
The balance of the circuit breaker account?
Correct.
Because there's other expenses besides transportation that go there. I'm not understanding. Where the, where we're having to disconnect there. So for, there's two things. One, the circuit breaker reimbursement. Can always be adjusted at any point when they, until the, the year closes and we saw this, right? That they took away money or whatever, because it was, it was not expensed within a certain period of time. So we have to closely monitor. Like what's in that circuit breaker account and make sure we're expending it in that timely fashion to, to do that. But the other part too is that they're really estimates until they have do, they can do adjustments to that. So that isn't something that we're able to. I guess guarantee that we're gonna get the money for.
Yeah. So then why would you want to put yourself at a liability of having that and having to spend it down in that account? Where you're saying, like you just said, last year, there was, there was too much money, quote unquote, in the account. So it went to free cash and then it was re-appropriated, et cetera. Why would you put yourself at risk of having that happen again, when right now it's safe in the stabilization, special ed stabilization account?
Because we know that the expenses are gonna exceed what we're getting. We already know that. So we know that we have certain amount in the, in the account. We have the expenses coming in and we already know it's gonna be in the red. This is where that we need to have funding. We need to secure funding for an expense that's not budgeted.
Okay, I, and I get, I agree. I, I just, and, and I will, I'll drop it after this. I'm sorry. I just. Don't see where, I guess I don't see where the other expenses are that are gonna drain this account. So I think that's what, maybe that's what I'm looking for. I'm sorry. I, I maybe that's where I'm not clear. Because I, I see this and I see that you said that there's gonna be a balance of six hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. Well, so one thing, the circuit, circuit breaker should not be drained. I, maybe that's, maybe that's the, the disconnect there. So state guidance is you should not be. Depleting your entire circuit breaker account. And so the balance in that account is. Carried over in some small amount. They allow at least one year of reimbursement over. And that's what based on. Guidance that we get from Desi. So I would say it would be ill advised to, um. To expense, to drain it as you suggest or go below one year. Because of the volatility of special education cost. And we saw that with this year. We have fourteen percent tuitions that are going up. That just happened. This year. So that is just one example that happens every year. There's adjustments that are unforeseen. This is just one of them.
And so if I can just add on to that, if that, if this might help. So some of the unfor, some of the other. Expenses that will draw that account down, we didn't provide every invoice that we have, because some of them are just typical invoices for the many, many students that are out of district. All those tuition bills, that's where we pay that from. Um, so we know those are coming. What I provided were. In, invoices for extraordinary expenses this year to try, to demonstrate the need for that. And if we look at that account and your numbers are on just need, they're accurate. The one thing I would say is in the guidance from the state, they encourage districts to. To keep that account at, oh, as close to a year's. Amount as possible from year to year. So circuit breaker is sort of an interesting account. It's, it's this amount. And it pays special at expenses and it gets reimbursed quarterly, but their guidance, and I'm sure you guys have looked at it as well. I know Natasha forwarded it. And all the links and whatnot is to keep that amount and it's sort of an ebb and flow. If it goes out, it comes in, it goes out, it comes in. But always to have that healthy balance in there because you never know when one, two, three students are moving in. And if they move in at an out of district location, that could be, I mean, just ballpark, that could be anywhere from a. Eighty thousand to two hundred and twenty thousand dollar expense. So that's the guidance that we're working with to try and meet that.
I, I did have a question about that as well. Cause I was always told that same thing, you know, if, if they, they could move in and it could instantly be. Eighty to a hundred to, to two hundred thousand dollars and we have no control over. But what Natasha was saying earlier is that. When they move in, you don't necessarily have that right up off the bat. Did I misunderstand that or is that?
She's right. And you understood that. So there is a transition timeframe, but. We're still responsible for some. It isn't just that we're gonna own it forever. So there's the. Guidance from the state. So that's really what we're trying to. Secure the funding. So we have easy access to that money for special ed expenses. And like you in that special ed stabilization, when it comes back to us to circuit breaker, it only goes one place. It goes to special education, non-negotiable, period.
And so you anticipate, I think, like three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars to come back in December. I think that's the second quarter. And then again, third and fourth quarter. So you're, you're looking at another nine hundred. And almost a million dollars to come back before the end of the year?
Yeah, I would hope so, because we'll have, we'll have invoices and bills between now and then going out. But yeah, that sounds about right.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question just in, if, if I understand just incorrectly, then that one of the concerns is to make sure that. Uh, you know, the, the, from listening to you, Brian and Natasha, the unlikely event that there is surplus money at the end of the year. Which, uh, as I understand it, would have to be spent if it's in the circuit breaker fund. If any unlikely event, uh, is there a mechanism for transferring money from the circuit breaker fund back into the stabilization fund? Or does it have to, once, once it's in the circuit breaker fund, uh, does it, does it have to stay there?
So it automatically transfers in to free cash if, if more than what can be rolled over. It's not, it's not, it's beyond.
Which is what happened.
I think, as Natasha, I think you said what I read earlier, which is. You can, you can transfer, roll over it if you will, one year's worth. Is that correct?
Correct, right. The reimbursements are based on the prior year of what like expense and claims and then it, you can roll over. That I think it's one year, it says of, of that. So you have to, you know, monitor, I guess, how much you got in the prior year and it's really about expending it. Forward. So it's management of that account, which we've, you know, made internal adjustments for to, to be more cognizant of that so that we're. Relying on making sure those monies are not. Um, lost and that was a one-time occurrence that happened to us. So again, I don't. I don't think that's something that we hope to anticipate happening again.
So the state wants you to maintain a year, but it only allows you to roll over one year. Wouldn't the state want you to maintain a level that's less than the amount they let you roll over? Like maintain half and then let you roll over up to one? Or is, so is, is the state have some, some, some weird policy there?
I, you'd have to check with, I mean, I provided you all the information about the circuit breaker. So it really is. What they provide guidance for. I mean, they. When they certified the free cash, it was more than, I think it was two years from the reimbursement. So I'm not sure exactly. You'd have to go back to the notes from last year or. Whenever that was and it exceeded the one year and that carryover balance and maybe that's exactly what went back to the free cash. Yeah, it was over the one year. So it was the balance, it was the balance over the one year and that's the amount that went back to free cash. So we can carry over up to one year.
It seems like if we can carry over up to one year, you wanna maintain less than one year in case you carry over slightly more and you've moved it, right? You wanna carry over. Half or three quarters of that amount.
All we can do is follow Desi guidance here.
No.
I, I think it, I, it might be, I'm sorry to speak for you, Wayne, if you were coming about to, but I can see the advantage of coming over as much as up to one year's worth. Is that, because there's no, there's no harm. So like carry as, carry as much as you can. And then, and then because of like, I think it's a true, um, concern. Like I think it's a guy, as you, as everyone understands, it's a very serious concern. That, that we are not providing the obligations of the school district to meet the needs of these I E Ps and otherwise. So like. Up three quarters, half, or, yeah, I, I would be conservative. I would just maximize it on a whole over every.
I also wanted to just mention one thing. I don't know if this is helpful at all to think about this way. So, um. If we have the money, we know it's in an account, it's a funding source. We can plan on using it. It's in our account to, to use, like in the, in the, in the, uh, circuit breaker account. If it's planned as a reimbursement, we're not able to budget for that. In a future asks, I guess, in future fiscal year requests. We can't budget for. Anticipated reimbursements, but if we have a funding source in a circuit breaker account. We can, we then know it's a funding source that we can budget on. So I don't know if that maybe is.
So are, are you saying you don't feel like you can count on this as a funding source? Because that's what it is.
No, I'm talking about the circuit breaker. When you were talking about the rollover, the circuit breaker, I was. Yeah, that particular amount. When it's in the account, we know what the, the balance is, you know, it's already accumulated. We can, we know what we can expense and, 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 and the timeframe for it. If it's a future reimbursement. The state's guidance again says that you're not supposed to and use anticipated reimbursements to plan for budget. So that's the other kind of drawback to that. If it's in the account, we can budget for it a little bit better. And that's less money we'd have to ask for the town for.
You have money, but you're not supposed to plan on using it. That, what I just heard.
The, the reimbursement, the circuit breaker reimbursements, if you don't have, if you haven't been reimbursed yet, yes, the state guidance is your.
You can plan to use, you, you actively have an account, right?
It's received already, then we know what our balance is. If it's not, if it's anticipated, it hasn't been received yet, we're not supposed to. Um, use that as a funding source for expenses and building the operating budget.
But you start the year with one year's worth of circuit breaker funding. You can plan on using that year's worth of circuit breaker funding.
Right, because it's in the account already. It's already been reimbursed. Exactly.
And Natasha, correct me, this might be a dumb question, but again, I'm just trying to get process down here.
That's okay.
The, when this money gets put into transfer, say the transfer cannot get approved. Any, any expenditures are approved at the school, at the school committee level as well, correct? You get presented with the documentation from Wayne and he says, we need to pay this bill. So it's really that, you know, I, I'm trying to.
Once it gets re, no, once it gets reimbursed to the, so we approved money that goes into the circuit breaker. That is there. But we don't approve each invoice per se. We do look at. Invoices that come through on the warrant. So, you know, we will see, you know, expenses that go to different accounts and the school committee, like we approve our, our warrants that have. Expenses on there and we do ask questions, you know, and we see the funding source. On that. So that is part of our due diligence in a, in an open meeting. We don't necessarily get that deep into it, but we. We have on our, our balance sheets, I think our quarterly reports also, it talks about our balances of our different accounts. And I think circuit breaker is one of them. That. Kind of like what's going in with the balance is how we expended each quarter.
Well, so it's safe to say this is the last check of balance for those dollars.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said, so it's safe to say that if this two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars is put into that account. This is the last time there'll be a check of balance against those dollars. For, for, for either the school committee or the select board.
Yes.
Well, the school committee will sign off on the, well, we'll sign.
But that's not a checking balance. That's, that's a hello.
Okay.
Okay. Alright.
So. For let's say FY twenty five, we're in planning stages right now. You are anticipating on having about a year's worth of circuit breaker funding. stages right now, you are anticipating on having about a year's worth of Circuit Breaker funding. How does budget planning work for that, Mike?
I think that's a conversation that might require more time than tonight because we're just still in our FY twenty five budget planning ourselves.
Not for FY twenty five, specifically more generically, for any area, you've been running about a million dollars for the last four years or so. How have you guys been planning for the use of that um, money every year?
The Circuit Breaker?
Correct.
It depends on what's in the account. So when the money's in the account, then we are able to plan on expending it. So we can't plan too far ahead. This is what I mentioned earlier. If the money hasn't been reimbursed yet, we're not allowed to factor that into future budget planning. That's that's what state guidance says. You you should not be, you should exclude reimbursement um, from for subsequent uh, fiscal year budget planning.
I think I understand your question and and I would probably ask myself a similar question. However, um, it's not the general fund, right? So we don't, it's not part of the town administrator recommended budget. Like they don't, they don't submit to me how much they want to use their Circuit Breaker money in their in their operating, in their general fund quest to me at the park. And so it is a separate discussion. That's why you guys don't talk about the use of this money. But then um, but I can see like this challenge of of sorting of you can't project exactly because you don't know, I'm correcting if I'm wrong, what I'm saying. You you don't know exactly what your enrollment dynamic is going to be, how many special education, what those particular I E Ps are complicated to to catch the name of it, but it's many individuals. So you're you you have a challenge, it's almost insurmountable until you know what it is come August, if you did come August or September, I imagine. You you then you play the game of like, okay, this is what I have to pay for. This is how much I have from a rollover. That's my expectation. I don't, correct me if I'm wrong. And and that I can see as being very difficult and very challenging as as the.
It is like this, this example of this invoice, this was not known and um, you know, and we were going over FY twenty four budget planning, right? So this is part of that being able to adapt that um, you know, transportation issues come up between over the summer as transportation, you know, bus schedules are being made. Um, you know, a lot of those things kind of revolve or happen as kids move, kids qualify for I E Ps later on, like that happens all through the year. That doesn't happen at one time. So what you know in the spring is not necessarily what's going to start in, you know, in this, in the fall, when it comes to special education as well.
So that's an interesting additional, I'm sorry, Jeff, that's an interesting additional dynamic of challenge, which is you're not, you can't even project the whole year. Is it, I think, as you just alluded to, it's all some just if you will, like.
You have students, you have students who are, yeah, they're I E Ps, they might qualify for an out of district placement, not until June or or May. And so that isn't known. And when we're right away, we have to project, ideally, we do a best guess. And then you have to figure out what school they're going to. What does that tuition look like? There are site visits that have to happen with parents. There's, you know, a lot of those things evolve. It's just, it's a very, again, volatile process and it's not very easy. So those are the things that we have to kind of be responsive in a way um, and understand that it's it is, it's not great. And I totally agree. It's frustrating and confusing to plan around. Um, but this is what we are, what we're left with.
Yeah, I personally just on tonight's topic, I'm comfortable with releasing the funds and allowing the school committee to or the school department per se to uh, to process and prepare and uh, you know, I trust that the process will work through the proper way.
So
Thank you, David.
Um, the last four years or so has been about a million dollars uh, coming into the school to the Circuit Breaker account. I think the year before that it was around a half million dollars. And so is it fair to say there's an extra million dollars therefore revenue and expenses coming into the school every year on top of what we discussed every uh, winter? It's just happening off cycle and more of a quarterly basis, separate profit?
Um, so I think there was, I think I had just sent you an email earlier, just outlining there are four different funding sources. The state outlines for special education. One of them is the chapter seventy. One of them is the I D E A, which is um, um, it's not a competitive grant, but it's one, it's entitlement that we get from the federal government and some from the state. Then you have um, the Circuit Breaker is the other one, which is a reimbursement that comes directly to the school. And then there's the Medicaid reimbursement. Medicaid reimbursement actually is that goes directly to the town. So there's different funding sources that come throughout the year relating to special education. Some come directly to the school, some go directly to the town.
Right, but that, so two of those funding procedures you just mentioned come in through the general fund and two of them do not come in, they go directly to the school. Right? So those basically, what I'm trying to say, there's another million dollars of revenue and expenses on top of the school budget that we discussed every winter. And do I have that right? Same question.
There, it's reimbursements for expenses already incurred. So they're not new revenue over, it's a reimbursement from a prior year's expense that we don't always know until we get the closed year, but it is more money that comes in, if that's what you want to classify.
Wouldn't it be restricted money? That's not.
That's exactly what it is. That's, we have to put claims.
Yeah, correct.
It's all, it's all restricted. Yes.
The special education lines that we've been looking at those budgets by the end of that fiscal year are about a million dollars larger for the last four years or so and then smaller before that.
I'm not sure what what line you're talking about, so I wouldn't be able to speak to that at this moment.
We get a request from the school committee, there's salaries, there's dollars, there's the budget, and then there's a special education line in there. But by the end of the year, that was not with an additional one million dollars that's been coming out of the Circuit Breaker account. So then where is that one million dollars going to?
The money that we request is is a is a town allocation. That's what we're, that's what we're legally required to seek is the town funding allocation that's outside of any other factor.
No, I'm saying the Circuit Breaker funding, there's another million dollars that's going through the school district with it being spent on.
But yes, it's a reimbursement.
So there's an addition to the special education line that we see in the the tri board meetings every February, right? So in every February, there's a special education line in there. And then by the end of that fiscal year, there's on average over the last four years, another million dollars being added on top of that. So the true special education budget has been a million dollars cost. Yes, because he alluded, there's four different funding. Okay, so yeah, all right. So there's a vector million dollars there. All right. Um, the the other question is, what other revenue sources do you have? I know you have S R funds that don't go through the general fund.
Um, I provided you a link there posted on Desi's website of all the grant allocations that we get for Maynard and for all I D E A is one of those. You have preschool grants, some are competitive, some are entitlement grants. So it depends on the different year, what you qualify for. Esser was noted as as one of those.
So let's let's put aside Esser because that's temporary funding, correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
So in independent Esther, of all those other things you just mentioned, basically all the non-revenue, all the revenue sources. Um, so Circuit Breaker, we just got, it's been about a million, but what are the rest of the total up to over the last, let's say, four years on average?
Oh, Jeff, please, I'm not going to give you a four year total number right now at nine o'clock at night. So if you want to, if you want to look at the link on the website that I sent you, these are burning questions you have. Absolutely. It's public information. You know, you can have that.
I'm not, I'm not just looking for a buffer.
I don't know. I don't know what the past four years, like I don't have that.
That would be the answer then. I don't know.
That's the answer. I don't know.
I don't want, you know, I'm not going to devolve into name calling and and all that nonsense. Go look at the website stuff. The answer is, I don't know. Just say, I don't know. I don't want to devolve into it. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything to discuss on this matter? Would anybody like to make a motion at this point in the evening? Yeah, I will move to approve the Special Education Stabilization Fund Transfer Request submitted by the Maynard School Committee for Special Education Transportation, Tuition and Out of District Tuition in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures is approved. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Don't thank us.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Next.
Mr. Chair, now we'll do the contracts and you'll see a lot of great faces.
Yeah. Wanted to walk through the contracts, A, Huntress Associates Incorporated Alumni Field Bleachers and Facility Designer Project.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So um, uh, so we're we're trying to build new bleachers and um, and we have Colliers as our owners, you're familiar with Bill, here he is. Phil Plomo, uh, uh, made famous by trying to build a little elementary school here in Maynard and uh, we, he also was the awardee for the owner property management contract from Colliers, two Colliers and Philip Barman. Um, so here we are in the in the process toward the bleachers, which as as any project of the scale, we start with an O P M, who did design for Huntress um, through an R F Q uh, procedure um, came out on top and uh, Phil was so good as to provide the evidence that in in your documents, um, a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars is less than what I had projected about a year or two ago about how much is my cost, um, um, which is good. So Phil, do you want to fill in? I kind of gave a big overview, but anything else you think might be pertinent um, of interest to the board?
Sure. So in terms of the the fee amount, that's to get through design and permitting. The idea is once we get through design and permitting, we would then be uh, part of the Maytown meeting for the taxpayer approval for the construction funding. So what's not included in that a hundred and forty eight thousand dollar proposed designer fee is the designer fee to get through the bidding phase and then the construction and closeout phase. Um, so in in the last page that was sent to you, kind of has the breakdown as it relates to the two hundred K C P C design grant and what would be eligible from that as it relates to the designer fee. And then uh, what would be considered ineligible and how those ineligible C P C design costs link to the remaining town budget. Uh, so we're showing a budget surplus of of roughly eight hundred and ninety five dollars uh, based off of that breakdown. So we got the budget to get through design and then the goal is to get approval in May of next year for the remaining budget needed to get through construction.
Um, I got a quick question. As I look at the proposal for services, um, I see included in it uh, some information or some comments about concession storage and bathroom building. Um, I think back maybe a year ago when we were having this discussion here, uh, we talked about, and I think the phrase was youth project creep, that this was supposed to be bleachers. And there was some talk about um, you know, expansion of the projects to other areas. And I'm not talking, I'm not saying that it's good wisdom, bad wisdom or whatever to expand the the scope. But how did we get here? From the last time I remember having a discussion here was bleachers.
That's a fair question and and we've been sensitive to that. That's been a, that that sort of sensitivity of of the direction from the board and a joint meeting with the school committees. That's your recollection, that's fair. And um, are we, you know, the question was, what what are we trying to do here? Just do bleachers? And a press box? And then there's a complication of what community preservation money that it's for and what they're they're allowed to use. And then the question was, okay, are we, do you want to do, are we going to do concessions then? Bathrooms? A D A compliance, um, because and I think the fear was, not fear, concern, would it be, okay, are we going to be talking about the track now? Are we talking turf field? Like, how far are we going? So um, and I'm I'm like in weight tops here to fill in, but there's um, those all valid concerns. And then through like, you know, sort of exploring with the design main food and the and the seating um, capacity of this bleachers, you're actually then unbeknownst to me, of course, I'm I'm not definitely building those, but then you started to trip in certain requirements. You have a certain grandstand of this receiving that, then you do have to provide. But of course, any, it's but um, bathrooms. And then the and then the question was, okay, so what does that look like? How big is that going to be? Would we even consider through add alternates, my understanding? Concessions, if we're going to build a building for for bathrooms, are you going to do concessions instead of building as well? And then how much might C B C contribute to that if there are those? So it did, we went down that rabbit. But what the entire understanding was, okay, so so the board had said bleachers. What what, but with that understanding, there might be an examination of add alternates, but those those costs could be known. But it doesn't necessarily, that's not necessarily what you. So I I'm I'm glad I probably watered down weeks and weeks and weeks of email. So Phil, what what else can you speak to that?
Sure. Well, I mean, you hit it on the head. So when we started the designer selection process, we actually had in the designer R F Q that the project scope was going to be um, the replacement of the existing bleachers, existing grandstand and then um, installing an accessible path from Great Road to the new bleachers. And and so that's, that was how we had it, uh, you know, kind of designer scope of services in the R F Q. Uh, got through the de- designer selection process, got Huntress's proposal. And it was at that point in the process, we are in in kind of going back and forth with Chris Huntress, the owner of Huntress Associates. He said, I've worked on projects like this before and I I know it's your understanding, this is a conversation between him and I, that it within three hundred feet, you got to have bathrooms. More often than not, you can um, the local plumbing inspector or local plumbing and building inspector allow that function to be through porta potties. And and that's kind of how alumni field has been in been functioning for some time now. But and then taking that conversation a little step further and coordinating with the local building inspector and local plumbing inspector. Um, you need the the plumbing code requires accessible bathrooms. You're not going to get that through porta potties. So the scope, the the base scope of services, if you will, uh, turned into not just bleachers, press box and accessible path, but those scopes plus uh, bathroom facilities. So the idea is we got a design proposal that we, in which we have a budget to afford the designer designing these scopes. So bathroom facilities, concession portion of that, that wouldn't be part of the C P C grant, but can be fit, can fit within the town budget. So the idea is like Greg was saying, produce bid docs that show, say, the concession portion as an add alternate. Um, and and then kind of see through the town meeting process, what can get approved funding wise for the construction side of it.
So Phil, you you you're going to understand some of the questions that we'll get. The this add-on of the bathrooms and concession is really a necessity based on the opinion of the gentleman from Huntress rather than somebody's wish list.
Well, no, it's it's a, it's a code requir- it's a code requirement.
But it's a, it's a requirement. It's whether it's whether it's from Huntress suggesting it or the or the building inspector suggesting it. It's not some, it's not somebody's wish list. It's not.
Oh, correct.
The project, it's a necessity comes with the power of the project. Okay.
Correct. Yep.
Because because I know at some point we'll find, you know, the pricing, this will, this will get into the public view. People will see this, people will see that we want a bathroom and it's concession stand. I thought we were just getting bleachers and that's kind of the answer that you just gave the answer to the question. This is why those are included in this. You know, this this contract.
Correct.
All right.
And Phil, I just have one question and I'm sure that that's why Hunter does their job, right? Is um, I take it that that amount of bathrooms is adequate for that amount of seating for the stadium?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Other question. Um, concessions obviously represent the revenue stream. And I presume that they currently they've been signed maybe for the sports programs or for P T O or something like that. Um, is 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 there any way in which that revenue stream could in make an impact on on the cost, the extra cost of of putting this in place in the first place?
Potentially, but I I I've been curious of how they get answered. My expectation is it may not be enough. If the, if the expected um, let's say it's two million dollars, I don't know, but like my minus dollars is going to be two. That was a year ago. I think it's probably going to be two and a half based on construction inflation, et cetera. And and if we have new bathrooms, whatever. So I don't know if concessions that are only being sold during, you know, certain seasons, is that 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 going to make it that?
Right. So I don't, I don't. The other part of this, I don't know that who who where those monies go. Do they go to?
I don't know. That's.
Like boost, the boosters club or that, you know, different places other than
Right.
The the school department or the school department budget. I'm not sure where they go.
There would be competing complaints for for that revenue.
Yeah.
They'll do it if they're not getting the money, they'll just stop. They won't, they won't sell this stuff. That's kind of the problem.
Oh, right. So right, even if it was like a portion of their proceeds, we're going towards this.
Right.
That's the expectation is we're at the bottom.
All right. Did we already do a motion for this?
No.
No reason, no. You were.
Okay, all right. Okay, we don't like to make a motion for the contract A.
Sir, I'll move to approve the contract with Huntress Associates Incorporated for the alumni field bleachers and facility project designer in the amount of one hundred and forty eight thousand dollars presented, authorizing the use of digital signatures is approved.
Got that. Any further questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, the, just to confirm Greg, the funding for that four hundred thousand comes from the town meeting approved warrant articles from whenever it was.
Yeah, we've been sort of like chipping away. Not four thousand, but.
Whatever, forty eight thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I knew what you meant.
Alright, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
License agreement extension break?
So, um, I kind of wish we'd done the order of like school, schools, and stuff here, but here we are. And standard in between these two school related contracts, um, right and peg license agreement extension, so the, the town. Um, through the, through the select board has, uh, license agreements with Comcast and Brighton. Uh, for like the use of, of, you know, public infrastructure and public ways, but then we have what's called peg. Um, funding source through these license renewals and that, that's what, that's usually like, the best, the most interested aspect of these horizon, these contracts. Um, five years ago, uh, we, we, the town, the select board, um. Engaged and approved, uh, renewal license with both of those companies, but Comcast was ten years, Brighton was only five. I've been in contact and correspondence with, uh, Special Counsel Phil Solomon over months, multiple months. Um, as he is negotiating with Verizon, who's not local, we were talking to people who are in New York. And, um, and he's been telling me, and how to go it, so recently he, and I said, hey, we're coming up to November. That's when, that's when the five years is up, uh, for Verizon and, uh, and that he's been in touch with them, but it's not finalized yet. So he, um, he advised me to advise the select board to consider offering an extension. Um, which he does very emotional is to, to Verizon so that we can finalize this. And then separately, uh, Attorney Solomon asked, um, if we could entertain, which I think the board probably will be willing to, uh, uh, a hearing. Uh, in regards to this renewal, uh, at December tenth. So, uh, the motion is to just extend the current renewal license up to December thirty-first. As far as, um, any sort of like insight that I have. Um, it seems that Brighton is still very active in the community, so that was, that was part, my understanding was, that was like, well, the person's, one of my first meetings here is Maynard. Um, my understanding was Verizon wasn't sure what their business was gonna look like in Maynard five years ago. Um, but unless the board has any other indication, I don't have anything telling me that they're not gonna be there for another couple of years. So, but I don't know what the end result, I know this comes up in budget discussions because we're very reliant on that revenue. So I don't know if it's.
Alright.
So it would be the same, I mean, I realize it's only a month and a half, but if it's the same terms, for that, that additional extension?
No, I, I don't think you should assume that, because it's gonna be, um, oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
It's seven thirty-first.
That's correct.
Yep.
It's, there's another, there's a legal term for that, I can't remember what it is, but yes, you're right, it doesn't, it just stays, I mean, nothing, nothing changes.
Okay, any other questions? Motion?
Move to authorize the town administrator to approve an extension to the renewal license agreement with Verizon, U N M Inc. Until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Alright, any discussion? You all in favor?
Thank you.
And now we're onto the Green Meadow, um, Elementary School Project, which I think will cover this, um, and also cover. Um, item twelve, this is. This is ten and twelve, ten, ten C and twelve, row one, so when we get to twelve, it will be already done. Alright, Greg.
So, uh, Mr. Perry, so the, this is the project funding agreement. Uh, not to be confused with the project, but it. So this is, um, the project's full budget, and here we are in the process. With, uh, collaboration with the M S B A, again, a very heavy-handed from the, from the state, the, the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Um, essence procedure, but following the successful, uh, vote, um, at town meeting. How we're gonna pay for this school, we've got a solution, uh, here we are, so now, now the state is providing this, this agreement. Um, to solidify that, that funding source and that approach. Um, uh, my understanding is this was already, I wasn't present for this, we're winning, or was I?
I know you were.
So for that Monday thirteenth, um, this was heard and discussed in the stores by the. And it's on the tentative agenda for the school committee on the sixth, on December sixth. Um. And that's where we are. Phil is also the man for this one, so if you have any, if you have any questions, it's not his first school, so he's, he's gotta be better than I about question.
So the, the project funding agreement, that's something that, I mean, so, here's what I'm gonna say, I typically, and I, there are a couple. Meetings ago that I like, with the school property, I like to vote on it first. Um, however, with this, and the school building committee did endorse it already. And the project funding agreement is actually the town agreeing, correct, that, that we're funding the project? It actually doesn't. Yeah, so I just wanted, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, does, does the school committee even have authority to vote on this?
S- so, so technically speaking, uh, the M S B A would wanna see the building committee's vote and the select board's vote. Uh, we, we're, we're following kinda the three-tier vote process, um, because that's the three-tier vote process. We went through the, for the project scope and budget agreement, um, back in August, so that's, that's that.
Well, that is, it, it came to time, so, it, it, I, I think everyone would agree that u- usually we would just go to the school committee. If they happen to have had a meeting, if the timing of meeting is just aligned, then we probably just would not got school.
Right, my point is, I don't think there's any legal basis for the school committee to weigh in, so.
Yeah, this is a major tradition.
Yeah.
Of getting the school committee.
There are certain things that I absolutely agree with, just team with, that the school committee should weigh in first, but on this one, I like if the school committee. Alright.
Yep.
Okay, um, would anyone like to make a motion?
I will move to authorize the town mayor to enter into and be bound by the project funding agreement, P F A. For the Green Meadow Elementary School, M S B A project number two zero one nine zero one seven four zero zero one zero. As presented, authorizing Krista Silva, Mayor's Select Board Chair, to execute the agreement on behalf of the town and to bind the town to its term.
Yeah, that's, you need language right there.
Hey, quit. Alright.
Is there a second?
Alright, um, so. All in favor? Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night. Yep.
Thank you too. If we're budget.
Apparently there's no budget development.
No, no, nothing.
Good, good.
Cause I don't know what a circuit breaker is. No, it's. No, um, so, um, coming out of vacation, I, I continue to be. Fortunately, I met with, uh, Gene Guard. So I'm, I'm still collecting information. And, um, my, my plan is to have an updated projections, both on the revenue side and expense side, per usual, and update the school, uh, uh.
Okay.
Um, we'll just very much to the data.
Okay. Um, alright, thanks. Uh, the correspondence is, is. Phil. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So to accept and break worth minus through A, Ruby, I show.
Any conversation about A and B, I think we're, I think this is an invitation to the select board, it is.
It is.
Thing, and they're looking for a response by the fifth.
Of December.
Of December, and we're the safest part at the, um, Friends of Maynard Seniors Holiday Brunch Invitation.
Do you all get this individually, or?
No, we did, uh, we, I think we did.
I think so too, yeah, I think it came from Deb. Alright, any, any conversation about those two items, other than the fact that we're all invited? We're also all invited to march in the parade.
Yeah, I am unable to make.
I heard about it, I heard it, black mark on you, but that's, I'm not saying. Yeah.
Yeah.
Holiday parade?
Holiday parade, yes.
Alright, anyways, sorry.
Jim Pickar really spectacular. Alright, um, so all those in favor of these two items, correspondence? Thank you. Definitely submitted, there's a minutes to be accepted. Anyone would like to?
I will, uh, move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of November eighth, twenty twenty-three, Asher.
Alright, um, anybody have any conversation about the minutes? Alright, all those in favor? Thank you. Town administrators report?
Thank you so much, Stephanie, Doug, and the town administrator for hosting, organizing, corralling, uh, encouraging and cooking. Uh, for this morning's stat training, which did include delicious pancakes and pie content. Can you guys guess who won?
Did Diane win, again?
What'd you make?
Again.
That, that's the killer pie, right? We just talked about it in May.
So, uh.
Firefighters judged and converted a firefighter and thought he did not like. Ah, safe.
Uh, we just talked about her, we can probably, we were talking about which pies to eat for Thanksgiving, and that came up, and.
Yeah.
So that was, that was, it was lovely.
Unbelievable.
Stephanie for all that work, and of course, um, I appreciate the efforts, uh, that's true, everyone really chips in. And then, um, and then it was fascinating, although very serious, uh, training topic, which was outlet training, so like evacuation training in case of, of threats, et cetera. So, and that was.
For the town, for town hall?
For town hall, so we had it in here, so it was, uh, Police Deputy Chief, uh, Chris Triano, uh, followed by Fire Chief, um. Angelo, um, Wallace, so they, it was, it was great, and, and, and lots to think about, very serious, anyway.
Yeah.
Um. Town Hall, um, will be closed, town office will be closed tomorrow at noon, um, in accordance of the Thanksgiving holiday, if they're able to see. And then that holiday parade is coming up, but the day before, which is December second. Um, that Saturday, it's sit and scroll, and then Sunday, December third, is the break. Um, I'm also excited that we have, uh, new department head, Steve Silverstein, who's the executive director for the Office of Consultants, that's conservation, we help building. Planning, it, it falls under musical services, and he started last week and he's still here, so. And then.
I always can't believe he stayed this long.
Yeah.
You do a lot of stuff, don't have him in a week.
He, he has been on the beat.
Been busy.
Run right in.
Um. And then separately, not on my, uh, published town administration report, but I wanted to get, um. I want to see if the board be, would consider designated a select board member to service a liaison in meeting with Special Counsel. Related to P F A's major left settlement action. We were notified by Special Counsel yesterday, uh, that, that he wanted to meet with us. Next week, in order to tee up, you know, continue this process, are we considering settlement requests or core action? Interested.
Is there a time set for that?
We don't have that, I, cause I didn't know if anyone of you would be available, I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to schedule through their like. Scheduling portal from Special Counsel, and, uh, so Justin and I throughout Tuesday or Wednesday next week.
During the day?
Yeah, there, well, at my perfect time, yeah.
Next Tuesday, Wednesday, what, yeah?
So do you guys, any, I mean, like.
I think one of us should be on, should be.
I mean, I, I can, I can do that, I'll be around, tell them a day. I'll make, I'll make time.
Okay, alright.
I wonder, if it's Tuesday, Wednesday, no problem. Alright, um, I guess after the chair report. Just wanna thank Kim Lally and Brenda Sullivan for putting on this year's, um, Veterans Day Parade and Celebration, and just, um. Thank select board member Dave Gavin for his great, um, words and, and speech at that gathering. And, um, it was nice to see the five of us all in one place marching. And it was noted by several people, the five of us, so there, I have to say that, too, uh, some people took notice that we were all five there, so.
Oh.
That's a good thing, and then, uh, finally, for me, I just, the last thing is, I met here last week with the, um. Set in on the Council of Aging's, um. Board meeting, and they are gonna get together with the, um, me. The, them and the other two boards, the Friends of Maynard Seniors and the, um. Senior Center Focus Group, and then when that, when the, hopefully what comes out of that will be something to share with the five of us. In order to create a charge and then go back and create a committee and. Keep that ball rolling, that's, we've been. Suggested we do for many people at special town meeting. And that's that for me, um, board member reports, Jeff?
Um, I will, and, and my thanks to your organization, it's paid, um, and it's. Very well run, and again, thank you David for your remarks as well, I think. Yeah, that is it for me.
Thank you. Mike?
Uh, echoing Jeff's comments, appreciation there for the comments you made at the, uh, market the other day, the, um. A couple of quick ones, the Economic Development Committee have produced their goals and objectives, um. Which I don't know if anybody familiar with them, but they presumably will be presented. Um, and just a request to highlight the awards and recognition brunch. Uh, scheduled for March the tenth at the Sanctuary for Local Businesses. Um, I know that Julia Flannery is, uh, gonna be assisting with that. Um, and also there's gonna be, uh, an overview of the business guide. And, uh, Julia Flannery is planning a series of workshops at the library. First one scheduled for December twelfth, so it's, uh, good to see that taking place. The Sustainability Committee, the R F P for the, um, M V P two-point-oh grant is now being posted, so hopefully that's moving things forwards. And finally, the M W R A system expansion. Um, there was a monthly meeting, uh, last week in the morning, which I was unable to attend. I was four thousand feet down at the bottom of the Grand Canyon, uh, not such good reception there.
Yeah.
Uh, however, I've been in touch with, uh, Justin, uh, DiMarco to, uh, debrief with him. Just to make sure that, um, you know, possibly debrief about what, what progress is going there. And that's definitely very interesting.
Uh. I just have something, girl, who was?
Paper, too late.
No, it's okay, uh, nothing today.
David?
No, I'm empty tonight.
Alright, well.
I would like to say happy Thanksgiving.
What, oh, yes.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
You, to all of you watching.
Safe travels. Alright. All in favor? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Good evening and happy Thanksgiving.